Good evening all, welcome to the March 14th Town Board meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge all allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold call.
Jeff Ranahan, first ward.
Joe Carlos, second ward.
Michael Sefon, fourth ward.
Matthew Oliver, fifth ward.
Asher Shushin, sixth ward.
Felicia Salvador, town clerk.
Jim Nelson, attorney for the town.
John Basely, supervisor for the town. Tonight's agenda is mixed with the agenda in the committee, the whole meeting because of last week's storm. We have one public hearing for tonight. It's Town Code Amendment, Chapter 154 Plumbing. I'd like to make a motion to open public hearing.
Second.
A favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody here to discuss the Chapter 154 Plumbing Code, public hearing? Anybody? Calling once? Calling twice? Nobody? Make a motion to close public hearing, number one?
Aye.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Jeff?
Being enacted that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie pursuant to a public hearing held on March 7, 2018 at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall, Town of Poughkeepsie, One Over Rocker Road, Poughkeepsie, New York, does hereby adopt amendments to Town Code, Chapter 154, entitled Plumbing, specifically Article 4, 154-24, Use of License, and be it further enacted that the amendments are attached hereto and incorporated herein but the language should be added underscored and language to be deleted, stricken. And the Town Board does hereby waive a verbatim reading of said amendments and does direct that said amendments be spread across the record as if it, in fact, had been read verbatim. And be it further enacted that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie has determined that this action is a type-two action requiring no environmental review. And be it further enacted that the legal notice of public hearing was posted on February 22nd, 2018, and published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on February 28th, 2018. And be it further enacted that said local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on this one?
Yeah, we had some discussion of this with the Plumbing Board and they're okay with the language of it. And basically, what we've done here is we had some archaic language in our code where we required that if you wanted to use your plumbing license in the Town of Poughkeepsie, you had to be 51% owner of your business. Therefore, only people who were licensed plumbers could run a plumbing business in the town. This opens it up that instead, you don't have to be a licensed plumber, but you can hire a licensed plumber in your business. So if you have a family business and you have a wife or a son or somebody who's not a plumber who wants to carry on the business, they now can do it. Or if you have a business where you've got like three, four plumbing family members, that the ownership can be evenly divided amongst them. You don't have to name one person having 51%. So it's more in line with the way businesses operate today. But to prevent covering, and that is where somebody uses their license to pull permits but don't actually work on the job, it prohibits that because it says you must be present on the job and you must provide continuing direct and continuous supervision. So you can't just give your license out to other people to do the plumbing. You have to be responsible. So basically, it's much clear that we're saying covering is not allowed.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven, zero, six, zero. That takes us to the end of our public hearings. As far as agenda items go, first one's Poughkeepsie Babe Ruth Baseball Parade, second one's Town Poughkeepsie Little League Parade, third is the Second Annual Crunch 5K for Anderson Center for Autism, five, accept the resignation of Anthony C. Balboa, Board of Ethics, six, Hudson Valley Senior Softball Users of Town Ballfields Agreement, seven, month of March 2018 is Music in Our School Month, number eight, intermunicipal agreement, RE Hudson River Source Water Collaborative, number nine, said date for a public hearing, Altice Cable Franchise Agreement, number 10, the Supervisor's Execution of Agreement with the Dutchess County Shared Service Fire District Facility Study, number 11, Town Clerk to Attend a New York State Town Clerks Convention, number 12, or two SCs, SC one, for documents for Underhill Solar Project, and SC two is a re-advertising of the bids for consolidation of town facilities with the fire district. And then after that, we'll go on the committee to hold, which will have a presentation, and then we'll go to committee reports after that. If they make a motion, so open the floor to anybody to discuss anything on the agenda.
Second.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody like to discuss anything on the agenda? Doreen.
A couple of questions. Number six about the senior softball use of the Town Ballfield. So after talking to Tom Myring, it seems like instead of paying roughly $3,400 for the fees for use for those two leagues for the number of days they wanted, they're asking to pay about $1,300. So that's only like 40% of the amount. So I was just curious, what's the criteria for lowering fees for people? How does?
Coming to a board like this, I mean, like Little League, we don't charge them full fees because it's a benefit to all our residents. It's not like you're just renting it for your own small group. This is a benefit to, you know, all the seniors in Little League, they have a contract with the town that we audit, you know, the books and stuff to make sure they pay their fees, they have the proper insurances, we'll take them on a case-to-case basis and something like that.
Okay, because they said in there they were requesting it because they were all over 60. But I mean, like, you don't give senior discounts for other permits in the town, right?
No.
Okay, so, all right, so the criteria is sort of, I guess, just on a case-by-case basis, you're saying. Number eight, the intermunicipal agreement regarding Hudson River Source Water Collaborative. I am in favor of that, but as I said in an email to the seven mayors and supervisors who are on that collaborative, you know, there are existing stormwater regulations and New York erosion and sediment control laws that really need to be enforced on a daily basis. That, you know, go a long way to improving water quality. So I understand that this originally came about because of the potential docking of barges in the Hudson River. But, you know, there's a lot of day-to-day stuff that affects our drinking water and ends up costing more for the water plant to treat the water. So I really think that more needs to be done when it comes to enforcement of regulations. I think the planning board needs to do more when it comes to protection of water resources. And I think that when you're updating the master plan, there are some new suggestions that might be put in there to protect the water resources. So again, I'm in favor of this collaboration, but you need to do more on a daily basis. Everybody who uses the Hudson for drinking water should be aware of that. And so SC one and two, those documents weren't out there on the website. So what is, what are you signing for Underhill Solar, which is special consent item number one? And why are you re-advertising for bids for the town consolidation of facilities?
The bids are, we only got two, Doreen, and we thought we could've got a lot more. So we're gonna reach out to some different avenues for the two bids. For the fire consolidation one, as far as Cypress Creek, they'll be up here to give us a presentation of what we're signing, but one of its pilots, some of it's stormwater paperwork.
Okay, so that's Underhill Solar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Again, I would ask that possible these things be put on the town website ahead of time. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? If not, may I have a motion to resume the rules?
Motion.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Carlos.
Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie has heretofore received an application from Michael Rowe on behalf of the Poughkeepsie Mid-Hudson Babe Ruth Baseball to hold its opening day parade on April 21st, 2018 at 10:00 AM, which parade route is outlined on the attached documentation, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby approve the application for said opening day parade and that the town clerk is in receipt of a certificate of liability insurance naming the Town of Poughkeepsie as an additional insured. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on this one?
I do have a question. Mr. Nelson, the certificate of liability insurance that they've given at the top says this certificate is issued as a matter of information only and confers no rights upon the certificate holder. Is that a problem? Is this the right piece of paperwork?
It's, looks to me, without reading each of the pica-type words, it's a standard ACCORD insurance certificate. And I'm not positive, but I believe what it is saying is that this document does not convey rights to the town. The real document that would convey rights would be the policy and the declarations that are attached to it. But this is presented as evidence of the fact that they have insurance. It doesn't name the town that I can see.
Well, it names us under, yeah, additional insured.
Where the certificate orders and?
And the additional insured.
Right.
That's correct. This looks to me be a standard insurance certificate.
Okay.
Standard form I use. Whenever I do something, we always have to use.
Okay. Thank you.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Whereas the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie has heretofore received an application from Terry Decker on behalf of the Town of Poughkeepsie Little League to hold its opening day parade on April 21st, 2018 at 10:00 AM. Parade route is outlined in attached documentation, now therefore be it resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby approve the application for said opening day and that the town clerk is in receipt of a certificate of liability insurance naming the town as an additional insured. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on this one?
Yeah, actually, this one. Felicia, did you get the right insurance from them? Because they actually did send us the wrong piece of paper to show you.
Well, it's not the wrong piece of paper. We weren't listed. There's new people in charge, all new people on this board. So I've been talking to her all week and she sent me, we were just approved to be added as one of the five additional insured yesterday.
Oh, so that's coming.
They said it's gonna take a few days to come, but I have a piece, she emailed a piece of paper that I have here, if you want to look at it.
Yeah, that's fine, though.
Yeah, we've been talking.
But yeah, it's coming.
It's coming.
Yeah.
Before the parade.
The only issue with this is both parades start at 10 o'clock.
I believe maybe that is incorrect.
Usually the one have been, one of them starts at usually nine or eight thirty.
They're not, they're not both at 10, just so you know, because I've been talking to the police, so it looks like somebody put 10, but it's not.
All right. Try to find out the right date and get that on the website.
Yeah.
The certificate in my packet?
Yeah.
Has additional insured language and checks on it, so I don't know.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Hmm. That's one too. Okay. Good.
Shored, yeah, town, and then their exit.
I don't have names.
It's not the regular one that you would see all the time.
The part of the ball field, their permits isn't up in here, is it?
Oh, it's way up at the top, underneath Keystone Risk.
Yep.
Blocks underneath it, town. No, no, it's Town of Poughkeepsie LL. That's.
Yeah, that's Little League.
Little League.
No.
Not us.
Believe me, I looked at the one when they had a different board, and this isn't correct.
Okay.
So it's coming. Because they have Arlington High School, the Galleria, there's like five different people that they add to this policy as additionally insured. It's coming.
Okay. Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Resolution four, be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby approve the application of Crunch Fitness to hold Crunch 5K to benefit Anderson Center for Autism on Saturday, April 5th, 2018, location of which run is from Crunch Fitness through Crown Heights and back to Crunch Fitness. And be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby approve the application for said Crunch 5K and that the town clerk is in receipt of a certificate of liability insurance naming the Town of Poughkeepsie as an additional insured. So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any questions on this one?
This one's correct.
Yeah, this one's.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five, six, zero.
Be it resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does here, does accept with regret the resignation of Anthony Balboa from the Ethics, Board of Ethics, effective immediately. So moved.
Second. Move a motion to second. Any questions on this one? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero. Be it resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie is hereby authorized the park facilities and program director to issue a permit to the Hudson Valley Senior Softball League for utilization of town ballfields at a price of $650 per field for a season pursuant to the attached request contingent upon receipt by the town of a certificate of liability insurance in a form acceptable to the town, naming the town as additionally insured. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on that one? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Resolution name in the month of March, music is music in our school month, whereas the study of music is basic to complete education, provides the competitive edge for successful educational reform, engages students in individual and group activity, develops creativity, problem-solving, critical thinking, and evaluative skills, and whereas the music education helps students acquire skills in the production and performance of music as well as understanding of history and culture. And whereas the Wappinger Central School District is concerned with maintaining and improving school music programs for all students regardless of their socioeconomic status or their ability, and whereas the Town of Poughkeepsie strives to instill a higher level of awareness and knowledge of music, and whereas the Town of Poughkeepsie strives to support fine musical experiences throughout the participation of over 11,000 students in the district's music program, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Poughkeepsie would be Honorable Supervisor John J. Basely strongly support quality of music education in the Wappinger Central School District and that all students kindergarten through 12th grade should have access to a well-balanced, comprehensive, high-quality, functional program of music taught by teachers certified in music education. And be it further resolved that the Poughkeepsie Town Board recognizes and commends the Wappinger Central School District for its concern and efforts to enhance the quality of music education in the Town of Poughkeepsie. Therefore, the Town of Poughkeepsie and the Honorable Supervisor John J. Basely hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as Music in Our School Month and endorses this observance as an opportunity to support the purpose and practice of music education encourages teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on this one? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby authorize the supervisor to execute an intermunicipal agreement regarding the participation by the Town of Poughkeepsie in the Hudson River Source Water Collaborative in substantially the form next, and be it further resolved that the execution of said intermunicipal agreement is part of the ongoing administration of the town's affairs and requiring no secret review. So moved.
Second.
The comment about, this came about, this organization came about over the concern of the communities to get drinking water from the Hudson River about parking oil barges in them. For example, where our intakes are, the closest barges would be less than a mile away. So that was the initial thing. Oh, by the way, the Coast Guard, did you see the paper today?
Yeah.
Coast Guard has backed away. They're not granting permission for the anchorages. It's not a dead issue, but it has a stake in its heart. This then grew from that, and this is the seven communities that use the Hudson River as a source water. And that's a defined term, and it has different things, impacts on the river. And I'm proud that the Town of Poughkeepsie is the leader here and that we're the first to approve it, and I'll report back as time goes on. But this is definitely a good thing for the Town of Poughkeepsie, for the city of Poughkeepsie, and the five other communities.
A question, actually. Each one of those communities is gonna have a representative and an alternate. When they're, when this collaborative is making decisions, will each one of those representatives have an equal vote?
Yes, but they can't, as in any agreement like this, if it was a decision that would cost money and cage a liability, it has to come back to the original boards, village or town boards. We can't delegate that kind of authority to a representative. It sits with the people at this table.
Okay.
Okay.
My thought is less about them sneaking things through and more about the proportion of populations. Town of Poughkeepsie is much larger than some of the others, and it's.
The object is that the river is the biggest thing. We're all working together on the river. So our others, like there's the group that does the Wappingers Creek, Wappingers Creek. So we're gonna do the river. So everybody's trying to gain towards one spot. And these are only towns that actually pull water from the river.
Right.
So, I mean, going forward, I think we'll have the, it's not gonna be based on volume of water or population. We have seemed to have the best voice, and we sent the representative from the Joint Water Board, Randy, to be involved in the Coast Guard informational session. So we seem to have a bigger voice than normal on it.
Okay.
And the actual name of this is the Hudson River Drinking Water Intermunicipal Council.
I was calling them the Hudson Seven.
Yeah. So we should change that to the Hudson River Drinking Water Intermunicipal Council. She sent that the other day. Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hold those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Opposed? Both motions passes six, zero.
Be it resolved, Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie, does hereby set April 4th, 2018, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall, Town of Poughkeepsie, One Over Rocker Road, Poughkeepsie, New York. As for the date of the public hearing, to consider extension of the current franchise agreement with Cable Vision of Wappingers Falls Incorporated, which extension shall be for 15 years from the day of the approved approval by New York State Public Service Commission, a copy of which opposed franchise agreement is attached hereto. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on that one?
This is Cable Vision of Wappingers, not Altice Cable Franchise?
I believe that Cable Vision of Wappingers is controlled or owned by Altice.
Altice?
Yeah.
Can't wait for the public hearing.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Resolution 10, be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby ratify the supervisor's execution of an agreement with the County of Dutchess regarding a shared municipal fire district facility study, a copy of which is attached. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on that one?
Right now, we have less than a year left on this. Is this gonna be long enough and can we get an extension?
It'll always work with us on an extension.
You can always get extension if we can, okay.
The county will work with us on extension, yeah. They're actually just getting the paperwork to us now.
Yeah, because this, six months has already elapsed, and we're looking at the last 12 months and we're still bidding this out, so.
Six months, we should be able to get the study part done.
Okay.
The next part will be a long process once we find out what the results of the study are.
Okay.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Be it resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby authorize Town Clerk Felicia Salvador to attend the New York State Town Clerks Association Annual Convention from April 22nd, 2018 through April 25th, 2018, in Albany, New York, funding for which is included in the Town Clerk's budget. And be further resolved that the Town Clerk Felicia Salvador is hereby authorized to utilize a town vehicle for travel to at and from said convention and, subject to budget limits and applicable town policies, to apply for reimbursement for her fuel, food, and tolls for the convention. So moved.
Second. Move a motion to second. Any questions on this one? Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. Number 12, be it resolved, the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie is hereby granted special consent to the following items to wit, one, authorize the supervisor to sign Underhill Solar LLC documents, two, authorize a re-advertising, a bid relocation and consolidation of town facilities, and be it further resolved that upon the objection of any member of the Town Board, none of you may be removed from the list and voted on separately. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on this one? Hold those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
With the special consent, yeah?
Yep. As you know, we do special consent one. If you're here, if you wanted to discuss further with me.
Whereas Underhill Solar LLC, Underhill Solar leases property in the Town of Poughkeepsie, the town, at 130 and 122 Underhill Road, the lease premise, from Brian Underhill, Mr. Underhill, and whereas Underhill Solar applied to the Town of Poughkeepsie Plan and Board for site plan approval to develop a solar electric generator and distribution facility on a lease premise, which applicates and was granted, subject to conditions on January 18, 2018, and whereas compliant with the site plan condition requires Underhill Solar to deliver certain agreements, and whereas pursuant to Real Property Tax Law, Section 479A, the town has advised Underhill Solar that it requires a payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreement from Underhill Solar, which pilot agreement Underhill Solar is willing to provide, now therefore be it resolved that the supervisor and his designated are authorized to acknowledge receipt of, accept, and execute as required, and substantially to form annex the following documents and agreements. One, stormwater management facility inspection and maintenance estimate from Underhill Solar in favor of the town dated March 7, 2018; two, stormwater management facility inspection and maintenance agreement from Underhill Solar to Mr. Underhill dated March 7, 2018; three, access and utility estimate option agreement from Royal Strawberry Hill Farm LLC to Underhill Solar made as of March 2nd, 2018, with grant of access and utility estimate annexed; four, memorandum of lease agreement executed February 28, 2018, from Mr. Underhill to Underhill Solar; five, decommission agreement from Underhill Solar and Mr. Underhill in favor of the Town of Poughkeepsie as annexed hereto, including assignment of access rights to the lease premise for the benefit of the town; six, performance bond from Underhill Solar for the benefit of the town as annexed hereto; seven, payment in lieu of taxes agreement from Underhill Solar to the town as annexed hereto; and be it further resolved, the effectiveness of the foregoing documents as to the Town of Poughkeepsie is further conditioned on, one, the execution and recording by Underhill Solar of the grant of access and utility estimate from Royal Strawberry Hill Farm LLC as annexed to the access and utility estimate option agreement referred to above, and the delivery to the town by Underhill Solar of the cash or equivalent collateral required by the Underhill Solar performance bond referred to above. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions on these? Hold those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero.
Special consent two, be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby reject any proposals which may be received for the relocation and consolidation of town facilities with the Arlington Fire District, and hereby authorizes the town clerk to re-advertise for proposals, including the Dutchess County Bid Net system, and be it further resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby reserve the right to accept or reject all proposals in whole or in part, and be it further resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Poughkeepsie does hereby determine that this work involves conducting studies, which will not commit the town to undertake or fund any unlisted or type-one action, and that it is a type-two action requiring no environmental review. So moved.
Second.
Move a motion to second. Any questions? We only received two bids on this, and we received numerous calls after the bids were done and after we did the walkthrough. And we've talked to other towns and what they've gotten as far as people coming in for these. So we think it's in our best interest to rebid it out and go from there.
I actually called that company, too, that you referenced there, and a lot of our bids are already on there. It's an interesting site, actually. I think that we, as a town, instead of just Dutchess County Bid Net, we should join it as well. It's free, and it would be to our benefit.
Well, definitely, it'll help. Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six, zero. That brings us to the end of our Town Board meeting. We're going to go on to our committee, the whole meeting after this. We have three presentations to make a whole. Presentation one, it's from Councilwoman Shearson. Renewable Highlands Program coming in. Presentation number two is the Van Wagner Development Group coming in, Tinkelman. And number three, Allstate Stores, we'll have a discussion on that after that.
And I just wanted to say too, the letter that the little league submitted, it does mention that the parade is at noon. It's very confusing though, but when I called her, she did say the police had mentioned to her that it needed to be later. So it's, it is in the letter.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. Right, Renewable Highlands? And you just want to give a two second of why you asked them to come in, or you just want them to go forward?
Yeah, let, just let them go ahead and go forward.
Sure, so first of all, thank you for having us. My name is Glenn Weinberg, I'm from Jewel Assets.
And I'm Victor Melendez, and I'm from the Institute of Building Technology and Safety.
So, we're here to talk about a program, the Renewable Highlands Program, which is a community choice aggregation energy buying program for municipalities in, really in Central Hudson Utility Territory. So right now, there are four municipalities that have signed on to the program. That is the Town of Phillips Town, the Town of Fishkill, the Village of Cold Spring, and the City of Beacon. And we're continuing to do outreach. The City of Poughkeepsie is, just held a public hearing, and they intend to vote on the local law, I believe, is it next week?
Next week.
Yep. And several other area municipalities are at a similar stage that you are, which is just beginning to get education on the program. So, that's the sort of the status of, organizationally where we are. And I'll take a step back now and talk a little bit about what is community choice aggregation and what our program is all about. So first of all, community choice aggregation is a municipal energy policy. It's only for cities, towns, and villages. Counties can't, don't have the authority to enact community choice aggregation. And it essentially relocates the authority to source the default energy supply for the residents and small businesses of a city, town, or village away from the state mandated default supplier, which is simply the distribution utility. So whoever your distribution utility is here at Central Hudson is also your default supplier. In fact, those are two very different markets. So the delivery, the distribution market is a regulated monopoly market, just like it's always been in the utility space. The utility owns the poles and wires, they have a monopoly on the distribution of energy. However, for the last roughly 20 years or so, the supply markets, that is who does, who sources the energy for you, is actually a competitive market. And there are up to about 100 or more companies that are registered competitive suppliers in New York State that would compete for your business. And they're the same ones that send you letters and call you and table at the farmer's market and all that kind of thing. So, community choice aggregation essentially gives the city, town, or village the authority to select the default energy supply portfolio from one of those, or one or more of those competitive suppliers through an RFP solicitation process. And the new innovation on this model, which is reflected in our implementation plan, which is being approved tomorrow at the Public Service Commission, I'll be in Albany at that meeting. And that is to integrate the, to integrate supply from local solar projects, medium-scale solar projects that are called community renewables or community solar, into that same default supply in such a way that it actually guarantees savings on energy bills for consumers. And I can talk a little bit more about that later, but I'd like to sort of walk through the sort of, the what is, first of all, a little bit more. So essentially, the way community choice aggregation works is that it leverages the aggregated demand of a municipality or group of municipalities. So so far, right in this area, we have four municipalities that have agreed to aggregate their demand together, and we expect that number to grow over the next couple of months. And take that leverage, that buying power, to the market, which essentially flips the power dynamic in the energy supply market. Typically, as retail customers, we simply respond to those offers. Again, those flyers we get in the mail, the calls that we get. We respond to those markets, we respond to those offers the same way we respond to offers in any other retail market. But the fact is that the market is too confusing and too overwhelming for most consumers. Only about 20% of residential and small business consumers ever even choose a competitive supplier. 80% stay with the utility. And the reason is, they just simply don't have the tools to really compare those products. Some of those suppliers have been notorious for some really bad behavior and some predatory sort of sales tactics and what is called slamming, where they sort of move people without their real consent. A lot of problems in that, in that energy supply market. So what community choice aggregation does is, A, it puts a consumer, a level of, a layer of consumer protection around the town. It is the town that develops the supply contract. It's the town that determines the specifications in that RFP. It's the town that sets all of the terms around how they're going to source their energy supply, whether it be the fuel source, renewables, fossil fuels, et cetera, whether it be the pricing terms, fixed versus variable, whether it be the length of the contract, 12, 24, 36. So all of those, those terms will be determined by the town, and the supply contract will be developed by the town. And since the aggregated buying power is so great, the market is still, is forced to accept those terms. And I'll tell you a little bit about our experience in the pilot program in Westchester. There's only one CCA program that's operational in New York State today. That's the pilot program in Westchester County. Before I was at Jewel, I was the program director of that program in Westchester. So I worked on that project for about a year and a half through organization and through implementation and launch. And we went through this precise process where we had 20 municipalities in Westchester County, each with their own council, right? And we handed that supply contract to each of them, and they each gave us a redline copy. We got them all together on conference calls and over email, and we worked through every single line of that contract so that every single one of those 20 municipal attorneys were comfortable with every word of the contract, and all 20 of those communities were willing to sign that contract. And we turned it over to the supply market in our RFP and said, here, don't change a comma. This is the final supply contract. This is the contract that the cities, towns, and villages have agreed to sign, and we will accept no changes. And because of that, and because the group was so large, they took it. And we got about six bids to that, really some really aggressive bids, even lower than we expected. And those customers, there's about 100,000 electric customers in Westchester County that are enrolled in that program. And so to date, they've saved about $7 million. That program launched nearly two years ago, May of 2016. 70% of those customers are buying a 100% renewable product. It was the largest renewable energy purchase in New York State when we signed that contract in, in 2016. So that's the pilot, that's the precedent, it's going really well. But the second generation of project, of programs, CCA programs, are just starting to coalesce and organize now. And the Renewable Highlands Program is one of those second generation. And we're going to take what we learned in Westchester, and we've already improved the contract, and we've already improved the program structure, specifically this mechanism that allows us to incorporate local clean energy and guarantee savings with it. So, I think now I'd like to turn it over to Victor to tell you a little bit about, just a little bit more about the organizing efforts and outreach efforts around the Renewable Highland Program to date and where we're going from here.
So, the interesting dynamic that Glenn touched on but didn't really address directly is that the lessons that were learned in Westchester were very much driven by a local presence and a strength in knowing the local landscape. To those ends, when Renewable Highlands started to build their platform to start marketing out for a CCA to be engaged and for that preliminary participation from local municipalities to come on board with it, one of the parts of that is looking for a local organizer. Someone who knows the landscape and someone who knows the local players and the things that are important in outreach and engagement. That's where the Institute of Business Technology and Safety came into play. One of our, one of our constituents wasn't able to be here tonight. Jeffrey Demansky works with me at IBTS, and we've been working on doing outreach and marketing to local municipalities because it's not just enough to connect with the municipality themselves, to understand what are the benefits and the opt-in, opt-out components of CCA, but also to make sure the residents and the local businesses are aware of what it's about. So that when things start to move forward or just the exploration process continues, they're also aware of how that works. What we've done so far is start to collect, develop marketing strategies. We're working on a structure within which we can have a website presence that's ongoing that gives a CCA 101 that could provide it at different levels of consumption for folks who are internet savvy, those who do not really know how to use it too much. You can set them up on the system and slide through so it's aware. But what it does is it gives this feedback input system that allows us to understand what the residents feel about it, provides a structure within which they can actually ask questions. But at the same time, we could provide baseline information to them as well, so they know what's going on. Setting up of a hotline that is going to be running throughout the entire process to make sure that any questions that need to be fielded from anyone, ward members, council members, town board members, and so on. You don't have to memorize everything yourselves. As leaders in the community, you have an onsite support system, and that is what the presence of that local organizer would be. Community events, engaging at schools, local organizations. We're obligated to do, I think it's about two forums through the system, to the extent practicable that we could go above and beyond, that we will, especially having presence at other events. But our goal, over everything else, is to make sure that there's clear, knowledgeable, and transparent communication with the residents and the community members, so they're aware of, honestly, if the decision moves forward to completely participate, to explore it, so that when and if the municipality decides to go with this, it is more effortless than not. And also how they can opt in and opt out of the system as well, when it gets down to that process.
And I should mention that, one of the biggest learnings that we took from the Westchester implementation process was all of that detail that Victor is giving, is the absolute central need for a true local customer support operation, right? That customer management platform, the customer service, the phone number. It is an opt-out program, so I should, I should, I should make sure to clarify what that means. In other words, when this becomes, when a community choice aggregation sources a contract that the town is willing to sign, that energy supply becomes the default energy supply for the residents and small businesses in the town that have not already selected an alternate supplier. That means that if they don't want to participate, it's absolutely free to do so. They don't have to. We give them three different ways that they can opt out, by mail, by phone, by prepaid postcard, by phone and online. But they do have to opt out to disenroll from the program. Otherwise, they will be moved into the program by default. That is, that is the basic structure of the program.
How do you guys make your money for this project?
Yeah, so we, we serve as the program administrator. We're compensated at the rate of 8 one-hundredths of a penny per kilowatt hour that is purchased under this contract, and we're compensated by the supplier that we contract with. The municipality doesn't, doesn't pay us, and in fact, the municipality doesn't actually factor into the chain of custody of the cash flow at all. So the customer still gets billed by the utility, by Central Hudson. They still pay their utility bill to Central Hudson. Central Hudson then remits the proper funds to the supplier, and the supplier in turn remits the administrative fee to us. And we split that administrative fee 50/50. Jewel being the administrator that handles the centralized functions of interface with the utilities, with the supplier, with the Public Service Commission, et cetera, and IBTS serving in the local organizer or administrative role, really handling the on-the-ground customer support functions.
If someone, I know there are a number of companies that have come in and given people discounts on switching from Central Hudson to another supplier. However, after the low rate they've got for a number of years, all of a sudden, it balloons up to a high rate. So you're basically saying by working with a large group, you keep that rate low.
You determine, so in Westchester, we have three-year contracts that are fixed. They're the same rate every month. There's no ballooning, there's no wiggle room for the supplier to change the rate. It's an agreed-upon rate for 36 months right from the start. I should also just put into context, I know that 8 one-hundredths of a penny per kilowatt hour is an abstract. It roughly equates in this area to about $6 to $8 a home a year.
Once, your pride point here is if you take over, if you're the company that we deal with.
Right.
When we make the decision, all of the businesses and all the people in the town go over to where you pick. They have to opt out.
Right.
Okay? So, what's going through my head, or some of my neighbors.
Yeah.
They wouldn't even know that they could opt out.
Yeah.
So, we had this once before from another company.
It was another company.
And the problem that I have with it is, the local government.
Yeah.
Having anything to do with mandating where our citizens and business are going to get their electricity from. You step between Central Hudson and the people, and you make your 1 hundredth of 1 eighth of 1% per kilowatt hour.
Right.
Times millions of kilowatt hours, I understand that.
Right.
And in return for that service, what do you provide to half a dozen people on my street who are seniors? They're not going to follow what you just tried to explain to us.
Sure. So everybody, so, so before the program ever, so after we sign a contract, there's about a two-month period, right before the program ever starts. And right after that contract is signed, everybody in town will get a letter. And that's a one to two-page, really a one-page letter that explains this in layman's terms precisely what's going on. A, that the town has, has joined this program. B, briefly what the program is. C, pricing terms, here's what your price was with Central Hudson over the last year, or two years, or four years. And here's what your price will be going forward if you choose to stay in the program. If you do not want to stay in the program, here are the three ways that you can opt out. That's basically the form of the letter. Every single resident and small business in town gets that letter. The municipalities, it comes under the municipality letterhead, but it is not at the expense of the municipality, it's actually sent by the supplier.
Why can't they opt in?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Well, that's been, that's been attempted in, so first of all, there's nothing that prevents opt-in now. There are energy buying clubs that form all the time, so if we all decided we want to buy.
But they're not backed by the government, the local government picking this.
Yeah.
Okay? I think it would make more, it would get my support, which it doesn't have now.
Yeah.
Is if in that letter, they decided whether they wanted to be in or not, for the local government to say to 48,000 people, I don't know how many houses or businesses, that we in our eminent wisdom have decided that this is what's best for you. It just doesn't come in right, it doesn't ring right.
Yes. Isn't Central Hudson doing that in our stead right now?
Central Hudson has, is a monopoly, and I have my problems with Central Hudson. But this thing reads to me that their business sits behind the local government saying this is what it's going to be to our citizens and our businesses. And it becomes mandatory on them unless they opt out. And I'm thinking about three people right close to my house. I don't even think they'd read you a letter. And whether it's a good rate now or it goes up in the future, that doesn't make any difference to me. It's the, you're automatically in because your local government, the seven of us brain surgeons here, decide that that's what's best for you. I don't think we should be doing that.
Well, that's, and that's precisely where, where we come in, right? So there's, so we're a municipal energy consultant, right? You hire us to go out and see if there's a better deal, right? You define what you've considered to be a better deal. Essentially, none of these programs ever move forward unless the rate that comes back in that RFP process is lower than the historical average rate that consumers have been paying. That's a fairly universal non-starter in those, those RFPs. We will not accept a bid above X, right? And that bench, that benchmark is determined by the prices that, that we've been paying historically. Second, there has been attempts to do an opt-in CCA program. New Jersey passed a law in 2003 to do an opt-in CCA program. There were zero programs, they scrapped it, and they went to this opt-out structure. New York, essentially, all the markets that have operational CCAs now are opt-out, and that's how New York has chosen to go. There is the opportunity to do opt-in. You guys can put your municipal support behind an opt-in program and do that. That's just not the sort of, that's not the program that we, that we.
And to do these RFPs, we've already agreed to use you as a company, right?
That's right, so we asked that.
So, wait, wait a second. So before we put the RFPs out, you already are in a contract with us to an opt-out program where we're telling the people and businesses here what their secondary supplier is going to be. I don't think that's going to fly. It's not going to fly with my support.
You're in a contract with us that says, we'll explore this together. And if we don't get a contract that meets your, that meets your specifications, then we, then you have no obligation to us or to sign any other contract, for that matter.
So the town doesn't.
No questions, thank you.
So the town doesn't pay you anything until there's been a bid accepted by the town, which you have brokered, essentially?
That's right, and to be clear, the town never pays us anything, the town. The residents of the town pay their utility bills, and a very small piece of that utility bills comes to us as an administrative fee.
Via the supplier, right, okay.
So to, also to be clear, this preliminary engagement, it's, we're using the word contract, but it's confusing because we're also talking about different levels of contracts as we move through. It is a engagement. It is a engagement. It's more of an engagement to explore the possibility to see if these benefits would work well for this municipality. And I just want to make that clear, because even I lost myself as we were talking. I was like, wait, that's not a contract, wait, is it a contract? But it's true, it's just a commitment to further explore that phase of it.
Not bind.
Or another contract.
Yeah.
Good job, guy.
I know, right? Not bad.
Gentlemen, I would have preferred if you'd come here and you brought some numbers from Fishkill, some Coal Spring, and some of the other municipalities. This is what the rate was for X, Y, Z years. This is what it is now, and this is what it's going to be for the next so much. You didn't bring any information?
So they're not, they haven't launched yet? No other CCA has launched other than the Westchester CCA? I'm happy to provide as much of data as you like, and I can do that certainly, you know, right after the meeting.
Well, I would have preferred since we're on TV and let the residents know, because we have residents that watch, and they call us, hey, hey, Mike, guess what? I think I'd like to hear more information on that. Tell them me, you want to tell the residents, that's why you came to the meeting.
Yeah, so the Westchester Power Program serves about 100,000 customers in twenty municipalities in Westchester County. There are two fixed rates, there are actually two utility service territories, Con Edison and NISEG. Each have two fixed-rate contracts, or two fixed-rate options. One is a basic option, and the other is a 100% renewable option. That 100% renewable option is roughly about two-tenths of a penny higher in price than the basic option, which equates to about $2 a month, or $24 a year. So to date, those residents in aggregate have saved roughly $7 million in the twenty-one months that the program has been. And again, I'm happy to send off, send along any data that you like. You can post it online.
But just to be clear, both of those rates, the standard and the 100% renewable, in order to have been accepted into this program, were lower than the historical averages?
That's right, we didn't know if that would happen, right? We put it, we did, we put out the bid, and we really didn't know. We didn't actually expect that the 100% renewable price would meet that criteria. We were hopeful, but we didn't know. And we were delighted that it did, and so far, that, the, both prices have performed very well. But the 100% renewable, which serves more than two-thirds of the customers, has outperformed Con Edison and NISEG's rate to date, yeah, which is...
So again, just to be super clear, someone who's not paying attention, someone who's not going to open the opt-out letter, they're, in order for the contract to have been accepted by us, it would guarantee, it would be guaranteed to not be higher than what they currently pay?
That's the specification that you set, that's what we advise, that's what we've advised, that's what everybody did in Westchester. It is ultimately up to you what specifications you'll accept. But we think there's really no, without savings, we understand that we value the renewable energy component of this more than potentially the average consumer might. But with, without savings as a threshold for participation, these programs just simply don't get off the ground, yeah.
Sure.
Could you give us as much information as possible and pass it on to my officer, Dan? And then we can pass it on to the boards to get a better look at this, because I use a third party now, and I don't know what you're comparing your rates to, whether it's Con Edison, Central Hudson, NISEG. Look at that, I really have a problem with, people always sign up for thirty-eight trial periods and forget. They sign up, and they don't know what they're paying for, and I sort of, along the line Bill said, it has to be a long sell factor, and I'm not there yet either.
Yeah, because unfortunately, I belong to another organization that has a little house with electric heat, and they went with somebody else. And it was a great deal for a while, and this past winter, they got a bill for $800.
Yeah.
And when they went to Central Hudson, they found out, oh yeah, your bill would have been $400 if you stayed with us, so...
That is really the reason that Community Choice Aggregation was started about twenty years ago in Massachusetts, that was the reason.
Yeah.
Right? First, to combat volatility, so the utility rate does this, and to get a fixed rate that does this, that prevents any of the ballooning or any of the monkeying with the rates, right? It comes, and of course, your counsel will review the supply contract very closely, and to make sure there are no loopholes with regards to that. But we advise to go out for a fixed-rate contract, it's the same rate every month. You know, the supplier simply can't deviate from that, there's no wiggle room, there's no way for them to spring a balloon, you know, rate on us or anything like that. That really is the heart of the program, is that it's consumer protection first. And that's why New York State has moved so aggressively on CCA as an energy policy for the future.
And if we were to do this, right, there's the options, what, at a twelve months, twenty-four, or thirty-six, or what you said? We're not locked in, what are we locked in at?
Again, you determine, essentially, what we'll ask for in the RFP is a matrix, right? What's your price for twelve months, what's your price for twenty-four, on the downline, maybe even sixty months? Past about three years, the suppliers get a little nervous because it's more risk for them. But we'll essentially ask you, essentially, ask them to fill out a little matrix, renewable, basic, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six, forty-eight, and they'll fill it out with whatever bids, and you determine which one you'd like.
Okay, now, Westchester, they're using local renewables there for the renewables? Or is it this nationwide?
No, it's wind power primarily from Midwest. There just aren't the local resources there.
Yeah, because we don't really have that much here yet either.
Nobody does yet, but there are over, there's about 330 of these medium-scale solar projects that are in the queue in New York State, which represent roughly about a gigawatt of power, which is a lot of power. So, over the next two, three, four, five years, we're going to start to see a lot more of these projects going up. And the way that the state hasn't, the reason for that is that the state has incentivized them with a very specific tariff. And that tariff is really a very good deal for both consumers and for developers. And that was the design behind that tariff. They want to see more of these small-scale projects. Really, it's in response to Hurricane Sandy and all these other terrible storms that we had, including the one just a couple of weeks ago, which people near me still don't have power, thousands of people. Luckily, I do, but thousands still don't have power. And here we are again with Con Ed and NISEG simply not knowing their systems well enough to get the lights back on. These small-scale resources are a resilience resource as well, and a permanent resilience resource for the town.
But they don't have any wires, so their power, their resilient power, has to still come over the grid through Central Hudson or through NISEG, depending on where you are, right?
These projects sit in a distribution loop, unlike large power plants that sit in the transmission grid, in the high-voltage transmission grid. So a big power plant sits in the high-voltage transmission grid, sends electrons across, and then into, through a substation and into a distribution loop, like the one that you and I live in. These projects tend to sit in the distribution loop itself. So even if the larger grid is out, you can still have, you can still have homes and small businesses that are lit in an outage if you have a resource like this.
As long as the wires are up.
Well, the wire, right, so again, if the wires are, if the loop, if the loop is okay, and it's somewhere down the upstream that the outage is, then you can switch off that loop and keep the loop lit.
So you're saying that these sort of power stations don't, they don't travel as far in wire? They travel more directly than something that has to go into the bigger system?
Much closer to where we live and work and actually consume our power, yeah.
And maybe they'll be smart enough to bury the line, so that takes care of a lot of problems too.
Yeah, and you'll see, I don't know if you guys were involved in the microgrid planning at all program, but a lot of these microgrid projects that you'll see also do a lot of this undergrounding of wires to provide extra resilience, yeah.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next, 33 Arlington Avenue. Just so everybody knows, this is the project over here, the furthest end out of the Arlington Business District. Jessica Lopez has been working on it.
I also have handouts for you guys.
And we asked them to please come in and just explain what the whole project was. They want to come in and possibly rezone a couple of spots, but we figured the board and everybody should have a clue what their next step is going forward. Gentlemen, thanks for coming. Jessica would like to be here, but she had an emergency.
Okay.
And our new director of development, Mr. Welty, is here to follow. Get some information on this also, it's all yours.
Good evening, my name is Steve Tinkelman. With me is Chris Mansfield and Jason Litchwick from my firm. We're here tonight to discuss what may be Phase Four of Van Wagner Place. For those of you that don't know, we're at the intersection of Van Wagner and 4455 and go back towards Springside Avenue, cites terrace. The project started out about seven years ago, where we moved our office into 25 Van Wagner Road. That property had 18,000 square feet in there. Currently, the property is occupied by my firm, the Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse, Pekidze, and we also have on the campus several other structures that are both residential in nature and office space. One thing led to another, and as you know, we've been in front of this board, different board, but, you know, some different people, but we've been here for several different iterations. The project continues to evolve, and we're pleased that that's the outcome, that we've gotten good response for both the residential and the commercial space. We now have twenty-seven operating units on the, in the Van Wagner neighborhood and about a little more than 30,000 square feet of commercial space. The good news is that, you know, that we've been getting a good response, and our tenants are happy and doing business and liking being there. We've been trying to brand the neighborhood and develop it so that it's a known location, and that seems to be going in a good direction. We've got ways to go on it. What we're finding, though, is that a sense of place really needs more people and more businesses. It, you know, success breeds success, and I think the idea of this neighborhood was one is so that there were things to do, it was walkable, you could, you know, live here and shop here and do things. And so we have businesses from, we have a spin studio, there's a hair boutique, there's some women's clothing, there's children's activities. And just last month, the Hudson Valley Healing Center opened up, which has not only a series of programming activities for, you know, personal health, but has a salt cave in it. And it, you know, if anybody has ever seen one of these, it's a facility that, in this particular room within the healing center, the room is completely sheathed with, you know, a Himalayan, pink Himalayan salt, and it has different healing, alleged healing capacities. And it's gotten off to a great start, there's a lot of things going on there. So what we want to do here is we've, we then moved to 33 Arlington, which is probably the last time we were here, which we then converted the former rundown electric building into a multi-tenanted retail and office structure. And that's up and running, maybe Jay, you want to point that out?
That's this building over here on the east side.
Actually, I skipped the whole second phase, which is across the street, Jay. Maybe you want to, we built two larger buildings, one called Hilltop and one called Center House. Hilltop has sixteen units in there. The Center House has six over about 4,500 square feet of commercial space. And so they're up and running and tenanted. We then went to the 33 Arlington building, and it was, it was an amazing process. The building was very rundown and industrial. It had ribbon-wire fencing around it with, you know, old spools of wire and equipment. And we ended up selling the project to a number of nascent businesses that have moved in, you know, and they bought into the vision of Van Wagner Place, which is kind of cool. And they're all seemingly very active and doing well. So the next thought was that the neighbors want more neighbors, and the density of kind of a hamlet neighborhood that we're trying to create wants more commercial, wants more residential activity. We failed to date on food, which we thought food and, you know, would be really the center and the heart of it, so we're still working on that. And we'll talk about that in a minute, but that's been the one struggle that we really still need to solve. The two buildings that we want to construct, the one to the left on the drawing, has sixteen units in it also. It's in a part of the parcel that's already zoned for this use. And it, and we're now able to get to this site a little easier through the acquisition of 43 Springside Avenue, which, you know, has great topography to get to the back property. One of the nice components of living back on that, and this is called the Westerly House, what's a really nice part of living there is behind it is a forever-green area that was part of the construction of, is it North Grand Estates or something like that? But it's a very large parcel, so those units will forever be able to look out on a wooded area, so it's really a great place to live. As part of doing this, part of our commitment, since there isn't the benefit in these days for, you know, we haven't found government money or grants for sidewalks, we're going to continue our program of building sidewalks so this neighborhood becomes ultimately walkable. If you've come to visit us, you know, you can see that we've started that, we've built walks. We're actually, this spring, going to change the signalized intersection, and we're going to be in front of you to formalize that, but it's been approved by the planning board to take the signal out and to make it a four-way stop. That'll also quiet the neighborhood and actually be safer.
Just a quick question before we go forward. On this drawing, the existing structures are in yellow, and then the ones not yet are red or blue?
Correct. Sorry about that. The blue one, just to help on that, the blue ones are the parcel that we own along 4455. Only in the last couple of months, we were able to complete a transaction with the DOT to complete that parcel, so we're actively marking that. That's really where we want to now, have outdoor park space, we want to create the restaurants. We don't really know yet. What's turning out to be one of the drivers of what we're doing is parking. Parking, you know, the modern planning world tells you that we don't, you know, need as many vehicles, but we're finding out that parking is dear, and maybe that'll change with the driverless cars coming and all that, but, you know, we're not there yet. So that's going to be the driver of that. With the Westerly's addition there, we have the required ordinance number of spaces, plus what we think is practical, which is both, you know? And we get that from the other buildings, we see how busy those parking lots really are. The other red building, which is on the right side of that drawing, is something we want to try, a new product, which is work-live-loft structures. So they're, they would be large, open spaces that you could live, you know, in a more contemporary environment, or you could work in that space, or do both. They don't exist here, but we think it's going to be enormously, you know, popular, so it seems like a nice mix to bring into the neighborhood. The parking lot that you see on the, adjacent to that red rectangle has already been constructed. We built that as part of the development of 33 Arlington as, you know, as adjacent space in case we needed it, and also to allow for this project to happen. So it was a really good opportunity to do both at the same time. If you go up and see it, you can see it's really well-built and nicely landscaped, and, you know, and, you know, again, it, you know, you can see where the building site would be. So the last part about this, and why we're in front of you, is twofold. One is we need to change the zoning in order for the building, the work-live building, yes, is currently zoned R20, and we, and then also the 33 Arlington site, which is BH, we'd like to, just to simplify the whole neighborhood, is to take those two sites and make them all ATC, which is what everything else is there. And so that would be the first action that we'd be asking for. And as part of the participation, which is, and by the way, you know, what this board did for us is we worked on this project from the beginning, and we put a lot of time and effort in it, and then we realized the finances didn't work. And it's an endemic problem with doing housing in Dutchess County right now, is that in doing... doing market rate housing, the cost of all the components to build it out and then to finance it and operate it, you know, it takes time to grow into that market. So we came back to this board, and some of you remember, and we requested a pilot agreement for Van Wagner Place, and we were lucky enough to get your support on that. We got the support from the Arlington School District and also from the Dutchess County IDA, ultimately. And without that, this project wouldn't happen, wouldn't have happened. So, you know, I commend you for that, for helping us and for making it happen, but it's more and more you see that for these type of projects all over Dutchess County. So we would like to, the Westerly building is already part of the pilot. We would like to add in the structures that were in the rezone of, and that would be not changing the terms of what the pilot agreement is, it's just, it's going to allow us to finance it and, you know, make that happen. So the second request is to extend the pilot, you know, to that, the building, you know, which is the eight-plex for the work-live structures, and make one modification to the agreement. The agreement that was worked out originally, also with Kathleen Taber, and she was a tremendous assist in making this whole thing happen. In the original agreement, it says that the pilot starts at a certain date and then runs for 15 years, and since the economy, it's taken things longer and the project is evolving, and we'll be back here again for more things, but we'd like the pilot to start with the CFO of each particular building. You know, and that way, you know, it has the benefit of the full 15 years and helps in the underwriting again. So it doesn't affect the terms of it, it just, it gives us a little bit more breathing room in case the economy is not, you know, compliant with us, particularly along 4455. We're going to be in front of the planning board tomorrow night to present this as well to get some initial feedback. We like feedback, and we would be glad to, you know, to tour the site with anybody. We also have in our office a new technology that Chris Mansfield has been developing for us, which is virtual reality, and you're going to be able to actually walk through, and part of it is already here, so it's a little hokey, but you can actually walk through this and begin to see what these two buildings will look like on the site, and you can see some of the challenges that, you know, we're dealing with. Here are some of the initial images. This is the work-live building. Again, we're using some of the vernacular that we used on the existing buildings. This will have the eight units in it, and that's the existing parking lot, and the site will also be nicely landscaped, you know, it's a really good spot for this type of use. The other piece is, again, a similar building to what you saw in the Hillside House, and, you know, it fits nicely, and I think when we're done, what, you know, what's nice about this VR, this comes from the VR model, and the first things that you begin to see are a lot of your flaws. So we're showing you kind of some of the warts here in the initial part of the process. We want to landscape this more and create a little bit more space, so we'll be adjusting the building. But the cool part is you can put the headset on, and you can walk around the whole site, and you can really see what you like and what you don't like, and it's an amazing tool that, you know, hopefully the planning board will take advantage of as well, and if any, you're all invited, if anybody wants to see the, you know, the whole site, you know, please call on that, so.
Looks good.
Thank you.
I think, you know, anybody has any questions, reach out to them, go over, look at the site, and we can discuss anything that was brought up tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next one is Allstate Storage. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Kelly Leibert with Page Park Associates. I'm here tonight to just preliminarily discuss with you a rezone for a portion of a parcel to permit the expansion of the existing Allstate self-storage facility. It's pretty hard to compete with virtual reality, but I'll try to, I'll try to make this sound great.
Where are you talking about? Where is this?
This is the existing Allstate facility, which is located on Salt Point Turnpike.
At Innis.
At Innis, yeah. I think everyone knows where Grand Rental used to be, so it's in the back.
The way the light is, I can't, can't really see it.
Did you get the packages?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you got them.
We have that healthy package.
You got the healthy package, yes. So the property is eight acres, and it essentially runs from the area behind Grand Rental Station over to Grand Avenue, so it's a large parcel. It's, historically, that entire parcel was zoned residential, and I've been before this board to increasingly ask for property to be rezoned from the residential into the IL to permit the construction of the Allstate facility. So what we'd like to do is take a portion of the eight acres that's currently zoned residential and rezone that. And rezone that IL to permit the construction of the two buildings that we're proposing. The section that we're proposing is next to a residential district, and I just wanted to explain, it's very hard to see from this map, but the residences are up at like the 218, 220 elevation, and the finished floor of this is at 187, so it's really kind of tucked into the hill. We're using the back of the hill as really the wall of one of the buildings. There's no vehicular access back there, so there won't be lights, et cetera, and cars driving back there. We would present, obviously, a more detailed plan to this board, but I just, tonight, wanted to come and have this preliminary discussion with you. Access would be from Innis-Salt Point only, there's an existing access there. So it's a fairly kind of boring application, but that's really the extent of it.
No, Kelly, thanks for coming. I mean, you filled me out, and I just want to make sure the board knew before you put an application and where we were going with it, so if they had any questions, it's not questioned when they get here.
Understood.
I have no issues with it.
Okay, thank you.
Are the two buildings there, those are the only ones that are being?
Proposed.
Proposed? Okay, so the rest of this lot that you're?
They're existing. Those are all the existing.
No, I'm sorry, the rest of it that you're asking to be rezoned isn't actually going to be used currently?
Correct. Correct. It's really a big, it's like a big hill, so we're going to cut into the hill and put the two buildings there.
Okay.
Correct.
Anybody else? Thanks for coming, Kelly.
Okay, so we'll submit, we'll submit an application then to the board for your review. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That takes care of our discussion. Private committee reports. Finance?
Nothing to report.
Fire advisory?
No report.
Government operations?
Nothing to report.
Land use and planning?
Nothing to report.
Personnel?
We're still, like you said, going through the process of trying to hire a legal secretary. This is our second round of going through some resumes and applications. We're still working on that.
Okay. Recreation?
Yes, we had a meeting today, and we're continuing to work on the capital improvement projects, and the Rec May would like you to know that there's going to be, the Easter egg hunt is going to be April 7th, so that's the week after Easter, and it's going to be on the Vassar Quad where the residential is, starting at noon. They're going to meet at the north parking lot and then come in as a group, and there'll be an Easter egg hunt and lots of activities, so.
What time?
Noon.
Noon?
Yeah, meet at noon. And then also for Greenville, there's going to be a fit camp this summer that we're looking into, and it looks like it's going to firm up, and that'll be for adults. It starts at 6:00 AM in the morning. Yeah, that's early. And it's going to be Mondays and Fridays and 8:00 AM on Saturday, so they give you a break on Saturday. And it looks like it'll be starting the month of May, so that'll be $80 a month for anybody who's interested in participating.
A third party?
Yes, it's actually going to be a town rec program, but we're hiring a coach to actually run it, but we're going to take care of the, taking the reservations and payments and whatnot.
Have you guys considered a kid get fit program for the summer too, or no?
Well, we have our summer camp, but no. But I'll pass that on to them, because this is an adult one.
No gym allows a child to work out on any equipment?
Yeah, but this is just Greenville Park, so this is just running around. And then, that leads us into summer camp, which is, reservations are being taken, and we've got 14% filled already, so we're off to a good start, and they're still looking for staff, so if you've got somebody 16 years or older that's interested in a summer job, send them on in and make application.
Do the camp counselors still have to do one year of training prior to becoming a counselor?
No, no, you do not. No, you just have to be six years older, okay? And then, in the senior center, they had their Valentine's Day party, which was a huge success, so they had 120 people come to that. It was very enjoyable. And St. Patty's Day party is going to be March 19th, that's the Monday after St. Patty's Day, and it's $10, and that is also starting at noon. Okay, and that's, yep, that's it.
That's it. Water, Silver Highway?
Infrastructure. The mini-meeting was today, and we finished the reports from the different departments as to what they're planning and what they're looking at, and when they look forward, particularly our water and our sewer people, our infrastructure for that system is getting to be older and older. And there was some discussion about making sure that we have enough funds set aside when it comes time to start repairing some of the old infrastructure, and we'll look forward going through that. One of the things that was brought up by Mr. Ballard, our water superintendent, has to do with the proposal in Albany to allow the same kind of system that exists for CHIPS, which is what the highway department uses to get state funding. They want to do that called swap for infrastructure drainage. If you've been listening to the meetings, you know that I have a thing about drainage. I would like the board to ask the supervisor to write a letter in support to our state representatives for this program. This could actually bring money. We do it ourselves. This is not something we make a bid out and we get a contractor. This is something where, for example, the culvert pipe, Veldor Drive, is almost completely full of silt, they would give us the money for our people to take, put that new pipe in. So I would like the board to ask the supervisor to memorialize our position on this to our elected representatives, and I'll make sure you have copies of the letters, unless you're, Keith said he already sent it to everybody, so you may have it, Mr. Supervisor, but if you don't, I'll make sure.
No, we have it.
Yeah.
We have it, it's to the group that he was belonging to, that, on to those representatives.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Can we make a motion to suspend the rules for any comment on any town item at all?
Second.
Hold the favor?
Aye.
This is Barter.
Good evening. I'm Ann Barter. I've come tonight with a couple of suggestions, which I hope the board will consider. The first is the possibility of a spring cleanup. We recently had three nor'easters, we may have another one next week, with the result that, at least in my neighborhood, and I believe in a number of others, there are a lot of downed trees and large branches that have fallen, and there's a lot of cleanup that is going to be necessary from the storms we've already had, and as I said, there may be a fourth one soon. Now, I am aware that there are always budgetary constraints, but I hope that somewhere in our budget you could come up with some money to help clean up the town. Not all residents can afford tree services every time there's a limb fallen. Now, my second suggestion, I was having a lovely chat with the secretary to our supervisor, Joyce, and discovered that she and I have a common problem. When I sit for a long period of time, my arthritic knees just plain kill me. She says, when she sits for a long period of time, her hips bother her, and so I suggested, and this came from me, not from her, that maybe a vari desk would help her. That's one of those desks where you can raise it up and work standing up, or put it down and work sitting down. And she said, well, I think there is somebody in the town who has one of those, and I, so I am here to suggest that, first of all, on behalf of Joyce, who is a lovely woman, that perhaps she could have a trial vari desk, and that if there are other people who have medical problems that cause them, you know, enormous discomfort to sit for protracted periods, that maybe they could also be entitled to vari desks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mr. Armstrong?
While he's coming up, I've had a couple of constituents contact me as well about possible curbside pickup of debris that would be really beneficial.
A couple of questions. On special consent number one, where the Underhill Solar, where's the use of that solar energy going? Is that going to go?
To the residents.
To what?
The residents. The residents can sign up for it.
Tie into it? Oh, I can do, okay.
Just like the last company was here, you could opt in to use that company?
The, it was interesting that people were here talking about Central Hudson Electric, and I don't know if I'm off-base, but for the last two years, Central Hudson, from what I can see, has estimated every other month what the residential's electric use is. Now, it's been going on for two years, I've thought about it many times, and I looked at it again. Doesn't seem like commercials are being done that way, but residents, anyway.
Commercials are, has always been a monthly bill, so they take a charge of a month.
My thought on it is, and I could, maybe it could be explained better by someone, the Central Hudson or whatever, the only answer I got, well, we've been doing it for two years. My concern is for that month that they estimate my bill, every month that they estimate it is higher than what the actual cost is, or the next month is much lower because they compensate for what extra money they got. My concern is for a whole month, they're using the money from every residence that's being overcharged with an estimated electric use. Now, I would imagine that's hundreds of thousands of dollars that they use for a month, and then give it back to you the next month. Now, I don't know how this come about, whether, who approved it, what can be done about it.
All their approvals go through the PSC, so that's where they had to get it approved.
All right, so I guess we got to go and find out from them if it can be changed, or just, you know, they're using the people's money. Why is that? I don't like it, I'll tell you that, and I'm sure a lot of people don't like it if they ever really looked at it, but everybody's bill, and like I said, the commercial doesn't seem to be doing that. But they're using our money, and I object to it, regardless of how much money it is. It could be anywhere from $20 to $30 a month, according to how high the estimates are. The other thing I would like to see, or get an answer to, when someone clearcuts the lumber on their property for whatever the property's going to be used for, and doesn't get a permit to do so, and is throwing a stop work order on that property, do they pay a fine for cutting all that lumber without having a permit? Or is it just slapped on the hand and get your permits?
I don't know the answer to that, how much the fine is or what, I could find out for you.
I'd appreciate it. I think that's about all I got for right now. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Tinkelman thanked the town board for the pilot program, but he should be thanking the town residents who then pick up the slack for him when he's getting, when he's paying less taxes, because these pilot programs, the rest of the taxpayers in the town end up paying for it, and he ends up with bigger profits, so. Could you post those documents from Underhill Solar so that we could take a look at those? Because, again, they were added late.
After the meeting's dorian, I usually scan the whole packet. It's always where the agenda is too, just so you know, and I have an extra copy if you need one.
Okay, yeah, I would take that. Thank you. Then the other thing is, I wanted to thank the supervisor. I contacted you a couple of days ago, and I said that the one financial report, the annual report for the town was, on the website, was very out of date, and the latest one has been added, so at least the annual auditor's report has been updated. That's out there now for the year ending 2016. I haven't had a chance to fully look at it, but I will, and then I will likely have some questions. And the only one left then is the annual update document, also known as AFRU. That one- That one is for the year ending 2014, so that still needs to be updated. And that's the one that gets submitted per law to the Comp Trainers Office every year. Then the last thing is something that occurred at the water board meeting last week, and again, I bring it up here because the comment period at the water board meeting is at the beginning of the meeting, and people don't, people make comments, but more often than not, they're not answered. So, town board may remember, I sent out an email about, that I thought it would best serve town residents if RFPs were put out for legal and engineering services, and that was brought up at the February water board meeting, and then at the March water board meeting, it was brought up again, and I think the current water board attorney, Scott Volkman, was totally out of line. When they were discussing going out for RFPs, Mr. Volkman said that the water board was not obligated to do that, and then he went on to point out that the town board, when they hired their consultants in January of this year, didn't go out for RFPs. So, I think that the water board attorney forgets that he works for the water board, he does not run the water board. I think he was totally out of line with those comments. Mayor Rollison, who's part of the water board, in my opinion, was trying to push for Mr. Volkman's firm by saying that Volkman was, had the expertise. Well, there have been several water board attorneys since I've been attending, and I think that many attorneys have experience with intermunicipal agreements. I don't think Mr. Volkman is anything special. And Mr. Rollison also said that traditionally, the city got to pick who the engineer, I'm sorry, who the attorney was. Well, you know, where does it say that? I don't think it says that in the intermunicipal agreement. So if they want somebody in particular, they think that they should get that attorney, because it's the city's choice. And I also think, while it was not illegal, I think it was inappropriate to invite Mr. Volkman, while he was invited, he just was in executive session for that. I think the water board should have discussed the options about going out for an RFP without Mr. Volkman being in there. If you had a specific question for him, maybe it would have been appropriate to ask him for that, but to have the attorney, the current attorney, in there basically fighting to keep his position, I think was inappropriate. And while the vote was taken to go out for an RFP, I hope that's not just going through the motions and that we're going to end up with Volkman again, because, you know, of the fact that the city thinks they should be able to approve their, the choice of attorney. So, again, it should be the best price for the service that they're able to provide, so, thank you.
Bring them both out, and I think we will go through all the RFPs that come back and piss who we think is best. Whether it ends up being the same person on both sides or not, we don't know. Nothing's back yet.
Right.
Is there anybody else? Mr. Fifer?
A little tired, Mark.
What's that?
Just a wee bit tired.
We need a couple more snowstorms. I just wanted, I wanted to talk about the brush pickup, well, freshen everybody's topic, and you're all here, so that you fully understand what happens when that goes on. First off, to tell you what we're going with at this time, what we're doing is, anything that fell in the street from the storm that we pushed off, or Central Hudson cut and left, we're going through and we are picking all those up. So we're getting all the trees that were affected by that, that got pushed off the road, we've been out immediately to get all those as fast as we can. With that, we're accomplishing most of that and getting it taken care of. We probably have another day or two to do that. What I've been telling people is, that's what we're doing with the rest of the brush, so that it's not, I know sometimes it's difficult to get there, but the transfer station opens on April 7th, and they're more than welcome to bring that there for no charge, so that they have it. If the town board wants to do a curbside brush pickup, it's going to cost a lot, so we've done it in the past, and it turns into, unfortunately, it turns into a nightmare, because it's not just the trees that fell in their yard, it's the brush that's been in their yard for the last 20 years that they bring out. And then they prune their trees to bring them out, and we put a schedule out, and it doesn't get followed, so they'll keep putting it out all year long, and we don't have the manpower to do something like that. It's, like I said, it's not that we don't want to do it, and if the town board wants to approve a couple hundred thousand bucks, I'm happy to get contractors in here, and we can do it all summer long, but I don't think the taxpayers want to pay all that. I don't know where we would possibly get it, but it's not in our budget to do it, just so that we're all aware, so you're all aware of what we tell them, and we've been telling the people that now, for, the storm's been going on for a week and a half, so we've been telling that to the people, so the people that have already paid to get it cleaned up will be very upset as well. So the transfers open, transfer stations open 10 times during the summer. Usually it works out, like I said, we've been out picking up anything that we pushed off for the most part. People have been dragging it out, but it's kind of easy to tell who drug it out and who didn't, because if there's no tree around that it fell from, it's, you know, you can kind of pick it out. People are very creative with their stories that we get. So, like I said, it's not that we don't want to do it, and I wish there was ample time and ample money that we could take care of everybody all the time, but it just doesn't usually work out that way, so I just wanted you to know. The information that we're giving out in the office, so that it's not confusing or anything, and if there's a different plan that we're going to switch to, there'd have to be a lot more money involved.
The final money will make it tough. I mean, we've had storm after storm, so your storm budget money is pretty well winding down, and we have to remember, we still have October, November, December, and next year in that same budget process going forward. I mean, you guys have done a phenomenal job picking up what's out there ready.
Thank you.
And not to change the subject, I think, storm-wise, again, you guys have excelled, you know?
Thank you.
Going forward, making sure everything was done. We've had a few, you know, small complaints, not many, but looking at our town as opposed to other towns, I think by far, you guys have done a phenomenal job.
Thanks, yeah. It's tough when it's snowing, and you've got the trees, and you're doing both, and trying to keep up on everything and keeping roads open, it's a tricky thing, and so, like I said, it's a tough, we've had it happen before, you know, with situations not usually four nor'easters in a row, but, you know, it's where we're at. I, you know, I just wanted you to, because there's a couple, Jeff and Matt, you guys are newer on to it, too, so, you know, I just wanted everybody to be here to talk about it, in case there was questions that we could answer, and while we're all here, I think it works better that way. So that's why I just kind of wanted to bring it up.
So if constituents contact me, my suggestion to them is to figure out a way to get their debris to the transfer station on April 7th.
At this time, that's really all we have to offer. I mean, like I said, if it was a tree that was out in the street and it fell in Central Hudson Cutter, we're coming around, and we'll get those. And I'm not saying I might miss a few, so if somebody, you know, is very adamant and says, no, this was, you know, let me know, and we'll come out and, you know, if it's one it was, we'll grab it.
I'm just hesitant to tell people, hey, if it was this, because then, as you said, people will be...
Right, that's the thing. Like I said, when you show up to the house and there's no tree, you kind of know that it didn't come from there.
My neighbor's house is down, it flew over.
It flew over, yeah. So, but, yeah, and hopefully we don't get the fourth one next Tuesday. We don't need it. So, any other questions?
I just want to touch on what Jay said. You guys did an excellent job. I know, like, in New Hamburg, I called you guys up because we were stuck there. You know, one tree was blocking there on Channavale Road, and then one was on Chief Road, so the only way we could have got to the north side of the district was to go through Eustonville on 9D. And I called you guys up, and I mean, the tree was out there within 20 minutes, so it at least gave us one path to get to the other side, so you guys did an excellent job.
If there's no wires involved in it, we can get there, we can move them, it's one that, you know, they fall into wires, and we have to wait for Central Hudson to let us know that it's, that the power's out and all that stuff, that it takes longer. You know, they had a nightmare. I don't envy them at all, you know, for that. And there's a few places, too, if somebody does mention a koya, that if there's been a larger tree, you know, we're taking the smaller part at this time to get most of it, so there may be a stump left or a trunk left, and we will come back and get those, so if they're calling, you know, we'll take that kind of stuff, you know, from that, but something might be left behind if somebody calls and says, you know, they only picked up part of it. You know, we're just trying to get the most we can out of the way for another storm.
You know, and your offer, you're working with Central Hudson during these storms, I think was great, too. You know, they needed help to get a road open, you guys worked hand-in-hand, and hearing what you see in the paper from other towns, Central Hudson was very responsive to us. It wasn't calling and conference calls, there was multiple conference calls, but if you needed anything from their representative, you picked up the phone, whether it was 4:00 in the morning or 9:00 at night, they picked up the phone. The group that we had that was responsible for the town, they were very responsive, you know, offering to help out, and Mark had a couple houses, a couple spots where there were wires tangled, kept the road closed, and we got them open as quick as possible.
Yeah, they usually, we always usually work well together. They're guys on the road, they're great, they do good. We help them, they help us, so we always try to be a good team.
It was my first storm, you know, nature to deal with them, and between you, them, and the police department, everybody, I think everybody worked very well to get us open, listen to what all in other counties and other ends of the town, what other, you know, electric services. I think, you know, as many as we had out, at one point, we were about, almost 20% of the town was out. They brought it back in a pretty big, quick fashion, most of it.
Yeah, I think for the most part, it went as well as it could have.
You hear a lot of time, the power's out, but it's not always, Central Hudson only goes to a point, when it comes to the house and the wires get ripped off the house, becomes a homeowner, but they're also working on that to make sure they weren't energized, so when the companies came, they could get them up and running, they could just come back and energize them, and it made it a lot easier for some of the homeowners trying to get their individual homes up and running, too.
Right, yeah, it's not easy, when you don't know where the power's on or off, and last thing you want to do is be electrocuted, because you get one shot at that, so.
Sometimes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Can I mention one thing as a resident?
One, too.
You can mention it from right there.
State your name and address, please.
Felicia Salvatore, Residence 48 Van Wagner Road. I just wanted to just go over this real quick with you, one second, the pictures here. The...
What do you have?
The front page, where he mentioned...
Oh, Tinkelman's project? I didn't know what you had over there.
Yeah, sorry. The R20, which is the Muse Alley, or whatever that is, Arlington Heights, and he mentioned, which I never knew that he was planning on building, this particular building, and I'm pretty sure back in the day, when we did all the public hearings about this portion, the residents that live here were under the impression that there was nothing going to be built behind them. And I just want to say, because it kind of bothered me, he made a statement, how the way this is going to be facing, these people will be looking to that wooded property, how they're going to have a wonderful view for many years to come, and then that eight-unit thing is going to be right across from my house, and I had a wonderful view for 30 years, and I just think that it's a little too big. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion resume the rules?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Carlos?
My fellow board members, since first being appointed by this town board to represent the town on the joint water board, I've made several reports to the town board about my concerns with the handling by the city of Poughkeepsie, of the Poughkeepsie Joint Water Project funds. In 2016, this board appointed a special counsel to advise the town board on matters concerning the Poughkeepsie Joint Water Project. I'd like to now make a motion to go into executive session, so the town board can discuss with our special counsel the current situation and any actions that the town board may have to take to resolve the ongoing question. Be it resolved that the town board of the town of Poughkeepsie does hereby adjourn to executive session to consider the following matters to it: two, contract negotiations; five, confidential communications between the attorney and his client, the town board, based on the attorney-client privilege; and eight, matters leading to the appointment, employment, dismissal, removal of a person, firm, or corporation. And be it further resolved that there will be no action appropriating money. So moved.
Second. With motion second, any questions? The town board goes into executive session 843. I'd like to invite our special counsel, David Cooper, to come in. Thank you.